Good morning once again. If you have your Bibles with you this morning, if you want to be finding Hebrews chapter 12, Hebrews chapter 12, that's where we're gonna start this morning. But while you're looking, I want to ask you this morning, before we start, and before I share with you what God spoke to me, I must ask you, do you believe that the Bible is the inspired word of God?
Amen.
Do you believe that everything between these covers is true?
Amen.
Do you believe that even though part of it may rub us the wrong way, or may convict us that this is the truth, then we can proceed? I heard a lot of stats this week. The crime rate in the United States of America is surging higher and higher. Homicide rates are at an all-time high, and in case you didn't realize, Arkansas is right there. We're number five in the homicide rate for 100,000 people. In 2019, this is the most recent stat I could find, but I'll assure you, this number I'm fixing to give you is a lot higher. But in 2019, did you realize we had six million US children, school age, on some kind of medication? Most school shootings in the world happen right here. The world, they're pushing for lighter prison sentences, if any at all. They're wanting to pass legislation to legalize all kinds of crime. They're wanting to make drugs legal. They're wanting to be able to do this, and I heard a commercial, and I'm not gonna stay on this long, but this was only, I'm not gonna call it a Christian radio station, it's some people who were portraying themselves to be a Christian, and they had a radio program. And they said that a 21-year-old adult should, and listen to their wording, they should, they said, they should be able to walk around with the marijuana in their pocket and not be worried about being arrested. So they're already saying they've got it in their pocket. So what they're saying is, we want to live a life of sin, we want to, and not be convicted of it. And folks, it goes a lot deeper than drugs today. They're wanting to release the people out of prison, they're wanting to do away with the punishment. Well, what is missing in all these things that I just described? And I want to tell you how good God is. Y'all got all over the message this morning in Sunday School when you started. And if you wasn't here for Sunday School, I'm gonna go ahead and tell you, you need to get here for Sunday School. It starts at 10:00 AM, and that's when you need to stroll through the doors, because it is very important to hear everything that God has for you. And God began this morning, and you know, I tell you all the time, I'm like Gideon, I like to have some reinforcement. As Sister Frankie started, I started getting my reinforcement. Then y'all started sharing your testimonies, you started chiming in back there. And I knew, when Sister Kay spoke up, that God was telling us today, folks, I can guarantee you one thing today, God wants us to hear what we're fixing to hear. He let me know that beyond a shadow of a doubt, and I began to listen to y'all talk, I knew that He was talking to us. And here is what's missing, in everything I just described to you, well, one word, is discipline. Let me define discipline for you. It is the practice of training people to obey rules or a code of behavior using punishment to correct disobedience. This world we live in today wants no kind of discipline, none whatsoever. You remember, I told you a few weeks ago, when the shooting happened up in St. Louis years ago, the mom held up the sign, and the media showed it, but they didn't stay on it very long, and she said, the sign said, "My son should be able to rob a store and not worry about his life." What kind of world do we live in? Well, we live in a world that has no discipline, no obedience. And I'm going to take you into Scripture. I ask you, I ask you a reason, I ask you for a reason this morning, if you believed everything in this book, and if it was true. Because I'm going to take you in this book and show you in Scripture how important discipline is, and how we cannot live for God without it. And folks, I'm gonna tell you something, there's a lot of churches this morning that are preaching and teaching that you can live for God without discipline, you can live for God without obedience. And folks, that comes straight from the pits of hell this morning. A lack of discipline is destroying our nation. But even worse, it is leading people to reject God. We should embrace discipline this morning, because did you know, God disciplines the ones He loves? If you would, turn with me to Hebrews chapter 12, when you find that stand this morning, please, to honor God's reading of God's word. Hebrews chapter 12, I'm gonna start, when you find Hebrews chapter 12, I'm gonna be starting in verse number six. It says, "For whom the Lord loveth, he chasteneth and scourgeseth every son whom he receiveth. If ye endure chastening, God dealeth with you as with sons; for what son is he whom the Father chastens not? But if ye be without chastisement, whereof all are partakers, then are ye bastards and not sons." Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day. We thank you, Lord, for the wonderful Sunday School lesson you sent to us this morning, and the messenger you sent it to us through. Lord, we thank you for the songs, Lord. And Lord, now it comes, the preaching of your word. And Lord, I just pray, first and foremost, Lord, that you'd forgive me of my sins. Cleanse me, Lord, with your holy blood, and prepare this vessel, Lord, to speak your word. And God, I pray that you take control of my mind, my thoughts, Lord, and my words, help it be yours, Lord. And Lord, I pray for forgiveness and atonement on everyone listening, Lord. Just prepare us to hear your word this morning, so that we can apply it to our lives, Lord, and be what you called us to be. And in Jesus' precious holy name, His children all pray. Now folks, we're gonna go through some things this morning, and some of it's gonna be a little tough. And I thought, as I listened to Sunday School, how appropriate, because we started talking about foster children and adopting. Well, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna tell you something this morning, if you're a child of God, I'm looking around this room, and I'm gonna say, if you're a child of God this morning, you've given your heart and soul to Jesus Christ, guess what? You were adopted. You were not the chosen people. I'm gonna go ahead and bust your bubble, I know we think we're pretty special, but we wasn't the chosen ones. That was the children of Israel. I've never seen Rick wear a yarmulke, so I'm pretty sure we're all the Gentiles. We're the ones that Paul, on that road that morning, do you think there, do you think God has a plan, church? Do you think God knew that Saul of Tarsus would be walking down that road to Damascus that day? Yes, He did, and He met him. I believe with everything in me that Jesus Christ met Saul on that road, in that blinding light, Saul couldn't see, but what He was doing, He was preparing him to preach to us. He was preparing to reach out to the Gentiles, and you remember, even Peter, Peter's ministry was primarily for the children of God, the chosen, the Israelites. But Peter had a dream. If you remember, God sent it down, and He said, "God, I don't eat of that stuff, that's unclean." Do you think God had a plan? Yes, He did, He was letting Peter know that Paul was coming. He was letting Peter know that I've got more than just this, I want to adopt everybody. I heard y'all this morning talking about the word predestination. Folks, I really get fired up when people start hanging, they'll try to hang us up on that. Well, let me ask you something, did God create every one of us? Did God want every one of us to be saved? That's predestined, but you gotta choose it. And it breaks my heart to see people turning away and not choosing it. Now, I'm gonna, the message I'm gonna preach to you today, I promise you, it's not easy for me, as a man, to preach it to you. Because I want you to know, first and foremost, God preached it to me when I met with Him. It's for me, as well for you. But you know, I heard y'all say, "Don't you like to fit in? Don't you like other people to like you?" Folks, your pastor's no different. I don't like stepping on anybody's toes, I don't like it when people step on my toes. But I want you to know today that I love you. If I didn't, I wouldn't be standing here. And when He shows me things, so many times, it's a fault in my life, and I share it with you, so that I know we all suffer some of the same things. So don't, don't hate the messenger. If you got a problem with it, take it up with the man that sent it. But a lack of discipline hurts the church too. And I'll be honest with you, we've been your pastor nearly six years. I see now, there's some things that I should've handled differently in my life, and there's some things that I should've handled that I didn't, that I let go. The Bible is very clear on how to handle discipline in the church. It takes a while, but folks, I'm gonna tell you something, any of you just really enjoy discipline and other people? With the exception maybe of our principal in here, Mr. Earl, I've heard from some coworkers of mine, that he was really, really good at discipline, and that he understood what the Board of Education was all about. But what about when God disciplines us? You gotta understand, to be disciplined means you done something wrong. Who has an awful time admitting we do something wrong? All of us. Any Happy Days fans in here, remember the Fonz? What was the one word he couldn't say? I was, "Woo, woo, woo." He couldn't say "wrong." Folks, if you look around, we live in a society today that cannot admit they're wrong. And if you're living in this world without Jesus Christ, can I tell you something, you're wrong. And if you're living with Jesus Christ, guess what? Sometimes you still make mistakes, you still sin. None of us are perfect, church, and we will not be. We cannot reach perfection down here, but can we be closer than we are? You bet we can. So if we are sons and daughters of God this morning, now, I want you to know this morning, if you're sitting down and sally in my voice, and you do not know Jesus Christ is your Lord and Savior, this does not apply to you. You must accept Him before this applies to you. If we are sons and daughters though, we will be disciplined, because we need it, and He loves us. Amen? Let me ask you something. There's gonna be a lot of preachers that would fuzz up at what I'm fixing to tell you. But do you believe this morning, that if you're living in sin, and you're, and you're a child of God, that God will discipline you? Amen? Could that discipline be anything? Sure could. Let me ask you something, do you believe God ever disciplines with illness? I understand, you can be a little careful. Sure He does. God can use anything in this world. Let me ask you something, if you lived your life, and God forbid, and I'm not saying this is of God, but just let me, let me give you a demonstration. If you just lived your life, and you were just living in sin, and you were just going as fast as you could go, and then one day, the doctor called you in and said, "Your test results aren't good. You've only got a few months to live." And through that diagnosis, you gave your heart and soul to Jesus Christ. Do you see that diagnosis as a blessing or a curse?
No.
A blessing. Is this our home, church? We're just passing through? See, we lock too much, and I hear too many people lock in too much on this world. This world is temporary. We heard that last week. Everything that we can see is temporary. What we can't see is eternal. So I believe, well, I know, that God disciplines in us. Does anybody know who God uses to discipline us? Y'all talked about Him this morning, y'all said He's the most left out of the trio, Holy Spirit. That's right. I heard y'all, y'all had me fired up this morning back there. I heard y'all say, talking about sealed. Folks, let me tell you something, when you give your heart and soul to Jesus Christ, truly give your heart and soul to Jesus Christ, you are sealed. I heard my daughter read the Scripture this morning, no man can snatch you out of the hand of God. You are sealed. And how do you know you're sealed? Did you get something on your wrist? No. Did you get something on your forehead? No. You're sealed by the Holy Spirit indwelling you. Don't let anybody misguide you about the Holy Spirit. When you are saved, the Holy Spirit indwells you. Amen? You must know that. That is how you're sealed. And then what does He do for us? Can any of you just walk in Walmart, and put one item in the buggy, and one in your coat, one in the buggy, and one in your coat, and just stroll out and be happy with yourself? A child of God cannot. A child of God would never do that, but if they did, if they did, what would they do? They'd go back and make it right. What convicts us? The Holy Spirit. Folks, the Holy Spirit is as much God as Jesus Christ or the Father. And where does He live? Inside us. We're building up to something today, church, just stay with me. You see, too many today will not discipline for three reasons. Number one, they want their kids to be like them, I mean, they want them to like them, they want them to be their friends. We've seen that, have we not? They need parents, they don't need friends. Or they are blinded to their little angel's need for correction. Anybody ever seen that? Ever been at a ballgame, and somebody just opened the door and just free their little angels, and they just go everywhere? You ever seen it in Walmart? They say, "Oh, it's cute." Why? Because they love them. Is it so cute to everybody around them? No, the cuteness wears off, does it not? Well, how many times are we spiritually like that? But the last one is, they don't care. And that one hurts my heart. I've, believe me, in my career, I've dealt with a lot of parents that just don't care. Go sit in front of the TV, go, just get out of my hair. Folks, that kind of discipline is not discipline. And you ever heard, "You reap what you sow." We are reaping in our world today what we have sowed. The parents have disengaged with their children. You can ask any teacher, I guarantee you, any teacher, within a week of school, they'll know which kids have supportive parents at home, and which ones do not. It's evident quickly. But you see, I want to show you in Scripture, the one thing, that if you do not discipline your child, or you discipline them in error, and when, in error, what I mean is, just get out of here, don't bother me. Get in there and shut up, watch, you know, folks, there's probably more of that than anything else in our society. Just don't bother me, just get out of my hair. That child will never have reverence or respect for that parent. And let me show you in Scripture. Hebrews 12, nine through 11. Furthermore, we have had fathers of our flesh which corrected us. In other words, we had an earthly parent who disciplined us, and we gave them reverence. So if they discipline us, we'll give them reverence. Shall we not much rather be in subjection unto the Father of spirits and live? For they verily for a few days chastened us after their own pleasure. But he, for our profit, that we might be partakers of his holiness. Now, listen to this. Now, no chastening for the present seemeth to be joyous, but it grievous. Nevertheless, afterward it yielded the peaceable fruit of righteousness unto them which are exercised thereby. In other words, folks, it's not, it's not a joy to discipline your children. God doesn't get joy out of disciplining us. But what does it yield? Peaceable fruit of righteousness. I see far too many people with teenagers they can't control. That didn't happen when they turned 13. That happened when they were three. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. It is a steady progression. And I've told you this before, we have received calls from parents to come to their house and deal with their teenage children, their 13 and 14-year-old kids. And we have said, "Ma'am, sir, that is not what the police is for. You need to be a parent. You need to get them in church, you need to teach them about God." I had a call, I had a call from a pastor, who had a subject in their congregation that was having trouble with a child. And they were wanting me to speak to the child. And I said, "Now, keep in mind, this is a pastor asking another pastor. I hope you're starting to see the problem." And I said, "What does their Sunday School teacher say about them?" "Oh, they don't go to church." I said, "Hold it right there." I said, "Mama's going to church, but the child isn't." There's how you fix your problem. The child is not the problem. We have to be honest today. Discipline is needed. I found this out recently, and it blew my mind. Because when my children were little, when you sent them to school, if you didn't want somebody to whip them, you signed a slip saying, "Don't whip my child." Did you know now, that you have to sign a slip to let them spank your child? And I'd hate to ask, how many slips are up there saying you can whip a child? Now, folks, I'm gonna tell you something. If the only form of discipline you have is late lunch bunch, and I've been in that, folks, I was a proud member of that when I was in high school for a few months, that was my form of discipline. Jimmy Stroud and me, we just knew, when I walked in the room, that before that class was over, I was having the late lunch bunch. But eventually I caught on, because I got tired of eating lunch late. But when there is, when your form of discipline is timeout or detention, how long do you think that lasts? I know this is tough, church, but, but I'm not, we're talking physically for just a minute, but, but I want to talk spiritually at the end, there's a reason for this. If you have a child that knows you cannot spank him, how disciplined is that child going to be? Just be honest. I can assure you, me and my wife were in the therapeutic foster care for five years. When they got there, they knew, as Brother Rick alluded to, you could see their behavior on the bus. They knew nothing could happen to them. How well do you think they behaved? It was bad. Because they knew, I don't really want to use this word, but, but please don't write me off, just stay here, they knew there was no painful punishment with their behavior. How many of you, when you were little, had that same blessing? That you knew beyond a shadow of a doubt, no matter what you done, you wasn't gonna get a whooping? How many of you got a whooping at school, and then you tried your best to keep that quiet when you went home? Because what was you gonna get worse at home? You know how much I like Andy Griffith. I love the episode, when the people move into town, and the little boy's spoiled rotten, and he's teaching Opie how to throw a fit and get his way, lay on the floor and kick and hold his breath. And then, then they seize the little boy's bike, because why? Listen to me, because he's breaking the rules, because he's riding the bicycle on the sidewalk, hurting other people. But Dad comes in and says, "Aren't you overreacting? What do people say to you today, when you say, 'Hey, I live for Jesus Christ, this is how I believe, and I won't do that because I live for Jesus Christ.'" They say, "What? You're overreacting." And then what did Andy tell the dad, when he finally saw the light? "Do you want to take him out to the woodshed? The good old-fashioned woodshed?" Folks, we got a generation that needs to go to the woodshed. They need some discipline. They need the Board of Education applied. And folks, I'm not talking about the kids, I'm talking about us. Now, I want to show you where we've been heading with this. But first of all, you say, "Is that biblical?" You tell me. Proverbs 13, 24. "He that spareth his rod hateth his son; but he that loveth him chasten him betimes." Please hang on to the betimes. Do you know what that means? Early on. So think about what that's saying. You discipline your children early on, or you're going to suffer when they're older. Folks, I've told you this before, but the first reverse, we done in a motel in Russell, Arkansas, where we set it up, and where we would actually sell the dope to the people, and we would arrest them as they, as they came. An 11-year-old boy knocked on the door with a baseball card, wanting to trade it for dope. Who do you think trained him? What I didn't tell you, is I had arrested his mother twice before. You reap what you sow. If you don't want problems down the line, then you better start getting in the Word of God. And folks, there is no better way to discipline than disciplining with love. It's the only way you can. You can ask my daughter, the few times that I had to apply the Board of Education, I was crying more than she was. But she knew we did it out of love. Folks, I'm not saying discipline out of anger, don't ever discipline out of anger. Don't discipline while you're mad. Stop and pray about it. And let me tell you something, you want to know a way you can discipline your children less? Pray with your children. Read the Bible with your children. Folks, we need God. That's what we need. And the discipline, yes, it comes with us. God disciplines me all the time. Sometimes I miss opportunities to witness for Him. I had to tell a guy this week, and I just, I just opened up in front of him, and he don't, he don't know me that well, and I said, I said, "God is really convicting me of all the times in my life that I could've witnessed to somebody that I just let go." Folks, God disciplines the ones He loves. God loves you. Do you think God would just let us go off and live in sin, and just turn us loose? Like go into the gym and just turn us loose? I'm going to close in 1 John, chapter 3, because this is where I want to tie this to Scripture for you. Here is, I told you earlier, that the disobedience is leading to people rejecting God. And here's why. Have any of you ever tried to witness to somebody who is living in full-blown sin? What is their first reaction to you? They get mad at you, don't they? They don't want to hear. Folks, I'm not talking about your truth, your opinion, share the Word of God and see what happens. People don't want to hear. How many of you, when your boss gets on to you, you just, "Oh, thank you, God, for my boss chewing me out." But how many of us need people to watch over us? Teachers, how would your classrooms have been if you hadn't have been in there? Would there have been any learning going on? Could, could they have hurt them three or four doors down? Of course. How many of us need to be guided? I do. I guarantee you, you do too. It's like trying to stay on this rug. I've used this illustration before. But I, anytime you get a chance, I would, I'd encourage you to do this. Get up here at the front, and walk really slow, all the way back with your eyes closed. Concentrate on your steps. Did you know you can feel as your foot goes off that rug? And you notice that back on? Just let that be the Holy Spirit in you. You know how many times He tells me, "Son, your feet are getting just a little bit off, you need to get back on. Your thoughts are getting a little bit off, you need to get back on." Folks, thank God today for discipline. Amen? If you had parents that disciplined you, and made you toe the line, you better thank God. Because believe me, I've seen a lot that don't, and I end up dealing with them in my other job. We need discipline, church. And why? Well, because, just like those parents I said, that refused to see their little darlings ever do anything wrong, now we've raised them, and now we're a people that believe that we can do no wrong. Well, if you do no wrong, that means you believe you do not sin. And if you do not sin, you do not need what? A Savior. See the danger? Listen to 1 John, chapter 3, verses 4 through 10. chapter three, verses four through 10. Whosoever comitteth sin transgresseth also the law; for sin is the transgression of the law. So sin is against God's law. And ye know that he was manifested to take away our sins, and in him is no sin. Jesus Christ took our sins, and in him is no sin. Whosoever abideth in him, sineth not. Whosoever sineth hath not seen him, neither known him. Now let's stop for just a second. If you just read that, "Whosoever abideth in him, sineth not." When you get saved, does that automatically end all your sinning the rest of your life? Does it drastically change your heart though? And should it drastically change your sinning? Should you sin less today than you did yesterday? I hope we're growing in Christ, but listen what this is really saying. Who abideth in Jesus does not live in sin. And who lives in sin has not seen him and never known him. Boy, there's some people that need to hear that today. Little children, let no man deceive you. Don't be deceived today, church. He that doeth righteousness is righteous, even as he is righteous. He that commiteth sin is of the devil; for the devil sineth from the beginning. For this purpose the Son of God was manifested, that he might destroy the works of the devil. Whosoever is born of God doth not commit sin, or does not live in sin; for his seed remaineth in him, and he cannot sin, because he is born of God. In this, the children of God are manifest, and the children of the devil. Whosoever doeth not righteousness is not of God, neither he that loveth not his brother. Let me summarize as we close. If you're a child of God and you've given your heart and soul to Jesus Christ, please, I wish they would amplify this over the entire world. You cannot live in sin. It said, not my words, God's words. If you live in sin, you do not know him. You have not been saved. And folks, the grace revolution will tell you that God's grace covers everything, and it does, but you must allow it to cover it. You must seek him for it to cover it. You cannot live in sin. Remember, I told you, and some of you hadn't heard this, but some of you have. When I was 13 years old, I went to a vacation Bible school. And I was sitting right there on the second row. And the preacher at the end, he said, "If you're here and you want to be saved today," we were all standing at the time, he said, "Just repeat after me." And that's all he said. And he said, "Just pray this prayer." He said, "Just pray, God, forgive me of my sins and come into my heart and live with me." And that's what I prayed. And that's, no other explanation. But here's the problem. You see, I prayed it, but I didn't mean it. So from the age of 13 to 33, I was as lost as any man ever was. Had I died, even though I ran home that day and told my mama I was saved because I had said these words. Folks, if I'd have died during that time, I would be in hell today. Why? Because I just said some words. There was no change in my heart. I continued to live in sin, and I sinned, and it didn't bother me. Folks, that is how you know that you're saved, is the Holy Spirit will convict you of your sin. You can't just live that way. As one of my favorite sayings is, you can't live with the devil and God pay the rent. It cannot happen. So today, we need to thank God for the discipline. Now, if you're under the sound of my voice today and you do not experience that discipline, you have not given your heart and soul to Jesus Christ. I'm here today to tell you that there is no guarantee that you will have tomorrow to make this decision. I wish, you know, I thought about this while y'all were talking about Sunday School. I wonder if we'd live different, if we had little signs above our head and it's how many years you had left. And you looked around the room, and maybe Ken said 30 years. Maybe Beth said 45 years. And then you looked at mine and it said 17 minutes. You think that would change how we live? If it would, then we need to change now. Because 17 minutes may be way more than what we've got. If you would stand with me all over this building. I would ask that every head be bowed and every eye be closed. I understand this might not have been what some people would call a salvation message, but there is no such thing as a message not leading to salvation. This morning, if you are not experiencing the love and the discipline of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ and the Holy Spirit, let me tell you something, friend, there's a reason. Satan wants you to be comfortable. He wants you to stay where you're at because you see, Satan, he's hiding his punishment. He's not letting you know about what's coming. He's wanting you to know everything's good. You got all this time, but he's a liar. He's the father of all lies. If you're under the sound of my voice this morning and you've never made Jesus Christ the Lord of your life, I'm telling you this morning, it takes a change of your heart. Step out from where you're at. Come to this altar and ask Jesus Christ into your life, asking to forgive you of your sins. And then you have to repent. This must be a life change. It's not an emotional decision. It's a decision for the rest of your eternity. But I can tell you right now, Jesus Christ died for you, and Jesus Christ loves you. And yes, sometimes it hurts when we're disciplined, but the only reason he disciplines us is because he loves us. And he wants us to stay on the straight and narrow, because that is the path to heaven. It is narrow. And the Bible says, "Only a few be there that find it." Are you among that few today? I'll ask you what I always ask you. If you draw your last breath today, do you know beyond a shadow of a doubt, are you sealed that you will be in heaven with Jesus Christ? Friend, if you don't know that today, he wants to make it sure with you. He wants to meet you at this altar. He wants to forgive you of your sins, and he wants to indwell you. He wants to live with you. He wants to guide you. If you're here this morning and maybe you're already a child of God, and maybe you hadn't been listening to the discipline, or maybe you've been blocking it out. We all do that some, church. But it's time today we be open to the Holy Spirit. We listen to him. We let him guide us and correct us. If you need anything today, we'll gather and pray with you. And we will believe because Jesus says, "We're two or more gathered." He'll touch our needs today. He'll touch your heart. If you're hurting or need anything today, we'll pray with you.